Okay, we got two minutes, according to the electronic clock anyway, and we'll start.
But this is a new one, and it's got the M1 chip in it, and the battery life is phenomenal.
Mine is pretty good. I don't have any problems.
What's the M1 chip?
It's an Apple-designed CPU chip.
Ask our IT guy.
I did.
It's a silicon chip that's like what's in your phone, and the battery life increased for like three hours. If it's an M1 here, it's 18 hours.
Did you see the new studio computer they just came out with?
Yeah, it was expensive. It's like $14,000, really talking to me.
Well, I wouldn't buy them.
The lowest one's like $4,000.
This is Studio?
They're nice.
Apple Studio?
Yeah, it's a new, it's a small form factor.
Mr. Smiley wants to... You don't eat that one anymore?
It doesn't, that's even, that's not the display either, that's just the computer.
We got less than a minute.
I like it for bright.
I have one in...
Yeah, I have a... No, it's next year.
Does anyone have Joe's number?
I don't have his number.
Court.
Does anyone have Joe's number?
I don't, probably some of them are emailed.
I mean, I have it on group text from Elise, I think it's signed.
We may not get anything passed tonight, but that's all right. Okay, it's 6:30, so we're gonna call the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting to Order. It's Thursday, March 17th. Happy St. Valentine's Day, 2022, at 6:30 PM.
St. Patrick's.
He was Irish, too.
He says St. Valentine's, but it's really St. Patrick's.
Yeah, well, okay, I've been away a while. Yes, it's St. Patrick's Day. Happy St. Patrick's Day, I'm sorry about that. I'm wearing my green, look. So with that, we'll call this to order, and Major Dave Davis, if you'll do the invocation, everybody please rise.
Good evening, this is just like old homewake, right?
Yeah.
Join me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we give you the praise and glory, and we thank you for the privilege and freedom that we have together here this evening. Father, there's a great deal of concern on the world stage. Father, we would ask for peace and stability throughout the world. And just now, we focus on our mayor, our assembly members, and the Kodiak concerns. Father, we ask your continued blessing upon the issues of tonight's... Thank you, Father, for your continued blessing upon them and upon our island community. In Jesus' sacred name, we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Sukhmiak Alutik people and acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiak Alutik region. We recognize the Alutik culture that enriches our community to this day. With that, we'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Art?
Here.
Mr. Delgado? Mr. Griffin?
Here.
Mr. Smiley?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Turner? Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mayor Roberts?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Scott.
Move to excuse Assemblymember Turner, who are absent due to personal matters.
Do I have a second?
Oh, and George DeGaulle.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. It takes us to citizens' comments.
No.
Agenda.
Approval of the agenda.
Oh, the agenda, I'm sorry, I thought we just did that. I told you, I've been away a long time. You're supposed to keep... Scott, go ahead, please.
Okay. Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
Go ahead, Scott.
Comment on the, on the motion. I was glad to see that in the consent agenda is the minutes for November and December, and look forward to getting January's and February's so we get caught up to March.
Roll call.
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? I'm sorry, Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries four zero.
Okay, thank you. That will bring us to citizens' comments. If, if you're calling in, it's 907-486-3231, or toll-free, 1-855-492-9202. If you're here, you please sign in and make sure the microphone's on. If you call in, please turn off your listening device so we don't get feedback. In all cases, address your remarks to the assembly as a whole, and please keep it civil. Thank you. Anyone wishing to address the assembly?
My name is Jeff Backland with OBI Secrets, and I'm here in our case of time, agenda in 14 D3, the Borough of Park Leasing. You can answer any questions that may come up about our interest in leasing property for buildings from the borough.
Evening, y'all. Good to see you. Playing Fortnite. I was realizing that we still have the OC still active, I'm understanding. I feel like it's a good time to get rid of that extra layer of privacy. If you guys could help support that, I appreciate that. I think that's about all I got to say. Good times and I hope.
Thank you, Court. Anybody else wishing to address the assembly? Do we have any phone calls? Seeing or hearing none, we'll move on. We have no awards and presentations. So anybody on the assembly have a committee report? No committee reports? Okay, and we'll move on. We have some public hearings tonight on some ordinances. The first one is ordinance FY 2022-12, which deals with amending the Code Section regarding required tax property exemptions. Scott.
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2022-12, amending Kodiak Island Borough Code Section 3.35.030A3 regarding required tax property exemptions.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Do we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome back here.
Thank you.
This is the fourth segment you guys are seeing this. This is just a housekeeping issue on the religious exemption portion for the residences of ordained, commissioned, or licensed ministers and other people of state, county ministry. It is updating from 1962.
And if I understand right, we are now mirroring the state statute?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will close the regular meeting and open public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this issue? You can call in 907-486-3231, or toll-free, 1-855-492-9202. And please state your name for the record, and again, if you call in, please turn off your listening device. I'm seeing nobody.
You are now answering a call from the queue.
Assembly regular meeting, please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is actually Pam Foreman from KMXT. The microphone on the podium does not appear to be on. So, that's all I had. Bye.
Thank you, Pam, we'll check that out. Do a test.
Seema, you might wanna, since it wasn't going over the air, you might wanna repeat what you said, please. For the public. Have that, thank you.
Good comment, thank you.
So this is updating the language for the educators, ordained, commissioned, and licensed ministers and their residences from 1962 to making it to the current state statute. There aren't any current state statutes.
With that, I'll repeat the call-in number, it's... It's 907-486-3231, toll-free, 1-855-492-9202. And Pam, if you still can't hear us, please call us back. We don't seem to have any phone calls coming in. We might wanna switch that microphone out if we're having a problem there. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and open it to the assembly for discussion. Any discussion on this issue? I know you've all seen it a number of times.
She has two microphones, so she could share.
Yeah, you wanna take this microphone and put it over there?
It's not the microphone, it's the input, so I'm gonna see if there's another input that we can put it into.
You can put it into this one.
I mean, yeah, I guess not. We can bring it across, maybe not all.
I'm trying to correct some technical difficulties for those of you who are listening at home.
Oh, we have a technical guy.
That's right.
I am, I'm...
So for those of you listening at home, I hope you're drinking your green beer while you're watching this, or listening to this. So with that, any comments from the assembly? Seeing none, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, that takes us to the second public hearing on ordinance FY 2022-13 regarding fees and permits. Scott.
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2022-13, amending Kodiak Island Borough Code Section 18.50.010 regarding fees for permits.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report, please.
This ordinance is to update 18.50.010 so that we can adopt things by resolution. And update, it was updated last meeting, so when you're looking at your package, please look at version two. All of these items would have to come to the assembly and be adopted after a public hearing under the resolution.
So it's making, so we can change them with the resolution, but there will be a public hearing on the resolution?
Correct.
Okay. With that, we'll close the regular meeting, open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to call in on this, please dial 907-486-3231, or toll-free, 1-855-492-9202. Speak your name for the record, and please turn off or turn down your listening device so we don't get feedback. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And assembly comments, anyone wish to comment on this? I know you've all seen this a few times also. Okay, with that, we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries four.
Thank you, it takes us to the last public hearing, which is on ordinance FY 2022-15, which is a rezoning of a piece of property that is currently split-zoned industrial and business. Scott.
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2022-15. It's the rezone of US survey 444, tract A, lot A, Mission Road, from I Industrial District to B Business District, as approved and recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 16, 2022.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Staff report, please.
This rezone is due to, in 1972, the Kodiak Island Borough unfortunately zoned it to industrial. Industrial zoning is not allowed for churches to be in, so we... The church came back and wanted to do some build construction, and that's when we found out it was in a zone. So went for the planning to change it, went in the zoning commission and heard it in 1972. Supposed to be for this specific tract, instead they changed everything over to industrial, which included the church. So we just needed to do this in order to get the church in the right zone.
So it's kind of housekeeping.
Yes.
We will close the regular meeting and open the public hearing. And again, if you wish to speak to this item, it's 907-486-3231, or toll-free, 1-855-492-9202. And again, please turn off your listening device or turn it down so we don't get feedback. I'm not seeing a whole lot of activity, so we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open it to assembly comments. And again, you've seen this a number of times, so we will just go for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, that takes us to the Borough Manager's Report. Roxanne Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the assembly. Roxanne Murphy, Borough Manager. I have several updates for you this evening, and I'll start with the best news. So I'm very happy to report that after negotiating with Nova Javier, the contract is ready for your approval. I really wanna thank Deputy Presiding Officer Williams, our attorney, Megan Christiansen, and Nova for the work that we did on this contract. And my fingers are crossed that you'll be willing to host a special session to consider that contract and potentially approve it, because Nova is very anxious on scheduling a flight to come back home. So if you wanted to discuss that, I...
Well, we can. My plan is, we should do it sooner than later, 'cause we are truthfully down to one, and Monday would be the soonest I would consider, because I'm not prone to evening meetings on Friday, unless you wanna do it Friday noon tomorrow. So the assembly, Monday at 6:30, or noon tomorrow, or even noon Monday. Scott.
I think we need to advertise for 24 hours, so tomorrow at noon's a problem.
You got it right, it's gotta be, it's gotta be Monday.
Exactly, right. So I would prefer Monday evening
Okay.
rather than during the day. So that would be 6:30 Monday evening.
So we will, you will get notification of 6:30 meeting Monday here in the chambers. One thing on the item will be the approval of interim contract with Nova Javier for the Borough Clerk's interim position.
Can you just got a question?
Question?
I was just gonna say we needed to check the meeting calendar to make sure there wasn't any meetings in here, but Mitchell just notified that we don't have any meetings in here. It's just a matter of notifying the public and making sure that the assembly can all attend.
Let's see if we, I don't know if we can get it in, we can get it in a KMXT tomorrow. It'll have to probably Monday's newspaper. You might be able to get him to put it to... No, you won't, no. So KMXT, and then post it maybe at Safeway and places like that, wherever we normally post those things.
Yeah, we can do advertising on the radio.
And do it also on our site.
So it is my understanding that there is a consolidation committee meeting on Monday if that conflicts with any of our assembly members.
What time?
6:30.
Can you put yours off for 10 minutes?
How about if we, how about if we do it for 5:30? Does any, does anybody have a problem with 5:30?
Aren't you the chair? I prefer 6:00, 6:30.
Let's make 6:00 then. 6:00 clock. Damn, we are so positive tonight, I can't believe it.
We're happy to have you back.
Oh, thank you. Roxana.
I'll be sure to convey that, so she can tune in, hopefully. Now, I announced that we got notification that there was a settlement regarding the drug distributor issue regarding opioids. And so the borough will be receiving an allocation of $10,000 for the next 10 to 18 years. So we'll be bringing this back to the assembly so you can start to understand some of the requirements that we'll have for what we can or can't spend that money on. But I just thought this was good to get your mind around the fact that we'll be getting that funding, and Dora will be helping with the financial understanding of that. I also wanted to announce that Senator Murkowski offered information about some great funding that's going to come to the Coast Guard, and it's their spending plan for infrastructure bill funding. And so Murkowski's office announced that Kodiak will receive $130 million for fuel pier recapitalization on the base, $40 million for housing construction to provide more housing on base, and then $40 million for a child development center facility, because they want to get it out of the tsunami threat zone and also increase families that can get more kids into that center. So I thought that was really great news for our community. Additionally, I just wanted to let you know that I pulled together what I'm calling an infrastructure team, because there's going to be so much funding coming toward our borough. So the infrastructure team internally will consist of myself, Megan Christiansen, who will really go with a fine-tooth comb over what the funding opportunities will be, Dora from finance, so we can understand the financial ramifications, Dave in terms of engineering and facilities, and Matt from his team as it pertains to construction projects. So we're going to, you, original mental, can answer a question about that?
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, one of my quick, you talked about the $40 million for family, something...
Child development center.
Child development center. That's tremendous amount of money. I'm wondering, what about Peterson?
Yeah.
Peterson relocation is what's coming to mind, because that's a high priority.
The Coast Guard has no interest in building a school, and, but they have offered the land, and you know, you were at that meeting with Admiral Moore, I believe it was.
Correct.
What is the school? It's called a child development center. But we have to come up, we have to come up. It's going to cost us about forty. We have to figure out how we're going to pay for that. But we do have some news on the repair of Peterson that I will be bringing up here shortly, or maybe Roxanne's going to bring it up.
Right, but, but as follow-up, that's more than adequate money for child. That's why I'm wondering whether there is some potential there for expanding that for the school, because it is, if they're worried about their kids, so it doesn't matter whether in school, only when out-of-school programs makes, so just looking at it as an opportunity.
Amy might have some more background on that.
I feel the need to defend the Coast Guard in this matter. The, it's not that the Coast Guard doesn't care about the education of the kids that would go to that school, it's that they just do not fund schools, end of story. So the only thing that the Coast Guard could do is what Admiral Moore told us with the possibility of the ninety-nine-year lease on a land, if we wanted to pursue that. The forty million dollars that's been allocated for childcare is because we're taking all of our kids that are under school age, and we're putting them in the tsunami zone. And so the Coast Guard does provide that service, and that is, so if you look at it like that, it would be a Coast Guard power, right? You know, that's something that they do. It would be like asking the city to fund a school. They just don't do that. They don't have that power. But they do take CDCs. The CDC is the one thing that they can do to protect the young children. But there is no pot of money that is for education right now.
But we need to look for some. Scott, go ahead. Scott?
About regarding the ten thousand dollars a year for the opioid crisis, that's an insult. I mean, this has caused havoc over this community, communities around the country. Ten thousand dollars just doesn't cut all. And I have to abet to this in some meaningful way, perhaps through our congressional delegation, perhaps through our state legislators. But this is an insult to the people who have suffered from the fallout of the opioid problem in the United States.
Scott, were you in on the AML stuff on that?
A little bit, but it's been changing a bit. So Roxanne's given us the latest update through the, through the courts. But I understand from our, that the Coast Guard doesn't fund schools. But the federal government does fund schools, and there's other opportunities there. That's Peterson Elementary was built by the Navy. That's why that school is there. So precedent has already been established in Kodiak for the government providing the school. So I see it as, as not so much a Coast Guard as a federal issue there. So I just wanted to state that, too. Thank you.
There's a book that's coming out, and I think Dave is getting a copy of it, on how we can spend some of this money that the federal government is starting to spew forth. And if we can somehow tie the safety of moving that school, we might be able to get some money out of it, but we're probably going to have to put money into it. And I don't see us selling any bonds for schools anytime soon. That's just my, my.
Not in our lifetime.
Not in our lifetime. Definitely not in my lifetime. I'm sorry, Roxanne, we've kind of gone off.
Oh, no, that's okay.
This is kind of a fun meeting.
It's exciting.
It's like freelance.
Normally, these updates don't offer the discussion opportunity, so I'm happy. In keeping with infrastructure, I'm very grateful that Dave Conrad and Matt from his team are going to be attending Lisa Murkowski's Symposium on Grants, happening on April eleventh. So that will really help us develop the understanding about the infrastructure funding and how it will affect our community. I also wanted to announce that a number of us staff went through a big issue, because there were residents on Seabreeze Circle that were very upset about the fact that there was a property that had changed hands, a rather dilapidated house, that the owner decided for part of the decommissioning of the house, it would include burning. And so there were various community concerns about the burning and what got burned, to the point that they filed complaints with the DEC. And so Dave Conrad and I met with Rachel McKenna today. She's from the Air Compliance Group from the state, and she is going to help us with ideas on ways to improve our process, and we'll definitely be bringing ideas back to the Assembly as we prioritize this, because we want to help put, hopefully, a little more teeth in what we can do regarding permits when people are starting to illegally burn things that create major problems for air quality and people's quality of life in the neighborhoods. So I just wanted to let the Assembly know that that will be forthcoming. I, I also added thirty thousand dollars to the budget that we'll be presenting to you, because I'm wanting to respond to the Assembly's concern about having a pay study. And there's great concurrence amongst the staff that we just need a compensation study, not necessarily a classification study. So that means it's much more affordable to the tune of I'll be allocating thirty thousand dollars for it, and our prior study that did both classification and compensation was about sixty-five thousand dollars, if my memory serves correctly. In other news, I've been working still on the Kodiak College Memorandum of Understanding, and our attorney had edits to it, so it got sent back to the college, and now their attorneys are taking a look at it. But I really hope to be bringing that MOU back to you guys soon. And I'm sorry that's taken so long amongst everything that's been going on. And lastly, I'll just say that I did, was able to help with setting up meetings between the mayor, the deputy presiding officer, Dave Conrad, myself, and we got to meet with Senator Stevens and Speaker of the House Stutes today, and I will let our elected share the news from that. But I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Regarding the Murkowski Grant Symposium in April, have you tried to contact the villages to see if they can get involved in that as well? There's lots of infrastructure issues in the villages that need to be addressed, and there are special pots of money that are available to them, not the least of which is the rural division from USDA that can help with that kind of thing.
Absolutely. One conversation that I had just today, and please forgive me if I'm saying his name wrong, Tyler Cornelis. He and Cornelius, Cornelis? Yes. I really could have gotten it wrong. But he and I spoke today. He's actually going to attend the symposium also, but he's really interested in getting some of the village partnerships, and that's why he really wants to meet with me. I'll be meeting with him next week. And actually, he invited me to fly out to one of the villages if we can work that out, to go to Akiak. And there's definite ways that I think we can help with that economic development and any other needs of the villages. So it's something I really want to work on.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
That takes us to messages from the Borough Mayor. I'm happy to see all your faces again. And like I said earlier, I feel like I'm starting this job all over again. It's kind of like, the older you get, you need to retrain after a week if you miss, miss out on it. What do I have to say? First of all, comments brought up about the EOC and ESC. They're having a meeting tomorrow, and both Roxanne and I will be attending as standing members. And the agenda is basically to stand down, and stand down the EOC and the ESC, and then propose a meeting sometime in the summer to see how things are going, because COVID is still raging here and there, and see if there's any other steps that we need to take as a community through the ESC and EOC. So that will be number one. Number two, we did meet with both Senator Stevens and Representative Stutes, Speaker of the House Stutes, and it was a very uplifting meeting, because the state has little, they're flush with, as Gary said, we haven't been this flush for eight years. And what they're hoping to do is, first of all, build up the reserve that they spent thirteen billion dollars out of the, the reserve, and hope to build that back up. But they also are looking to ways to help communities. And as Louise said, one of the best ways to help most of our communities is every community has major issues on school maintenance. Almost every one of them do. There's a hundred and something things on there, of which we have at least two, I think. And that includes the Peterson roof. And they're looking at, they're not sure where the funding will come from, but they're definitely looking at funding the full list, which is about two hundred million dollars. And I asked Gary, well, what do you think the governor's going to do, especially if he doesn't get the side PFD he wants? And all Gary said was, it's an election year. He says, I think he'll sign whatever we give him. So, and both the Senate and the House are working toward that. So that could be, and the fact that we are, what Dave said, I think sixty-five percent on plans on that thing, that that means that we will be shovel-ready by the time they decide to shovel the money out. And we might actually get the roof fixed and the air handling systems all in one. And the other thing that's on that list is the water treatment plant in Chinac. So I also asked him about the likelihood of full funding on the school bond. And as they both pointed out, the legislature's passed full funding every year. It's been the governor, and the governor has promised us to our face that, well, he's going to, he's going to let it go full funding. So, and again, as Gary said, again, it's election year, so I don't think he's going to change his mind on that. The only thing we have to keep in mind when we do our budget is, this may be a one-time deal. Depending on who gets elected, if he gets reelected, there's a couple of other people running that want to cut spending even worse than Dunlevy did. So it depends on who gets elected, we may be back in the same problem we've had in the past three or four years, three years anyway, of having the rug pulled out from under us. We probably will, if the oil prices stay fairly stable, we'll probably end up with at least the fifty percent. But, you know, we count on these things, and they get slammed for them. Scott, then Scott.
Did they say anything about the formula funding for schools?
Yes, that was the, the other thing we talked about. There, there's, if you look at the list of bills that Mark Hickey sent out, there's one for fifty million dollars, there's flat funding, and then fifty million dollars they're going to throw at the schools. And both Gary and Louise said that, in their opinion, they would rather see a raise in the BAS than one-time monies. Because you, you start the same thing. You, you plan on it, you get a one-time money, it's gone next year, you know, you got a big hole in your budget. And so, and that's something we all got to look at when we do budgets, that we have one-time money. We should use it to fill recurring expenses. But they did, both of them said that they would rather see that, whether we're going to get that or not. Gary did say there is a push. I estimate there was a push, and he says, there is a push, there is a movement to try to raise the BAS, Basic Allowance for Students. Scott?
Yeah. Did you ask him about the current year's funding on school debt? Because we're only getting thirty-six, thirty-eight percent.
Yeah, they're not changing that, as far as I know.
Well, the legislature passed a hundred percent. So as part of their budget adjustment, evidently, they didn't fund it. So DEED is only giving us and all other boroughs only part of it. And that was part of what I spoke at the House Finance Committee about, too. So that needs to be addressed for the current year.
We need to look into that, because if there's another.
Because they're doing, they're doing amendments to the.
Another two-point-eight million, or whatever it costs us with their shenanigans. Five-point-eight million.
And I'll make sure Mark Hickey is aware of this, and Scott, I'll call you to make sure we get everything straight with that.
Yeah, and the exact percentage I got from Dora, so she can give you that exact percentage that we're getting. So, thank you.
Yeah. And by the way, Mark Hickey, I really, every time I have to deal with that guy, I'm impressed with his knowledge and his connections, which is why we pay him money to be our, our guy there.
And he took a reduction in his contract to five thousand dollars this year.
And he pointed it out, because somehow it got misreported. So, anyway, I think I'm done. So other than that, I'm happy to be back. I hope you're all happy to see me, and for those of you who aren't, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. Glove.
Glove. We have no unfinished business, so we go to new business, and the first item up is Contract FY twenty twenty-two thirty-five Harbor Infrastructure Memorandum of Agreement. Scott?
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to sign Contract Number FY twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five Harbor Infrastructure Memorandum of Agreement for Portland Lu Project Development with the City of Kodiak.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, staff report, please.
This has been before the Assembly in the past. I believe you had a work session with the City Council. I hope your needs were met for this contract that is being presented to you. I'll be happy to sign it if you authorize it.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, I felt it was still far more wordy than I wanted to see, just to give them the money that we have. But you get attorneys involved and see what you get. So I'll be voting yes on it.
Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. It is March seventeenth, and tourism is incoming. So the sooner we get that passed, I think it would be great to get those installed before tourism starts.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Arndt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries four zero.
Okay, that takes us to resolutions. Resolution FY twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four, authorizing the manager to execute a loan agreement with USDA. Scott?
Move to approve Resolution Number FY twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four, authorizing the manager to sign and execute the required documentation with the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Utility Services for a low-interest loan in the amount of four million, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, at a one-point-seven-five percent interest rate, for a term of forty years. This loan is for the Design Engineering Construction Administration Construction and Contingency for both the Stage Three Closure Project and the Leachate Pretreatment Facility Additional Project.
Second. We have a motion, a second, staff report, please.
What he said? Basically, we have staff has applied for four million, eight hundred thousand dollars, roughly, and we have been offered this for a forty-year term at one-point-seven-five percent. We've talked about this multiple times, but if someone has a question, I'm happy to entertain that.
Questions from the Assembly? Scott?
Unfortunately, the forty percent potential for grant went away, but hopefully, maybe something will come in the future. Thank you.
Dave, go ahead.
So it has not gone away. It's gone away on the four-point-eight. There have been other costs identified associated with this project that were captured initially, and Mr. Smiley referenced RD, Rural Development. And if we decide to go forward, that will be with rural development, and that would likely be a grant. So don't give up on us yet.
Thank you. Good to know.
Any other questions from the Assembly? Mr. Smiley?
It's really worthwhile talking to the people in Washington and getting them to step on toes in USDA. It really works.
Yeah, especially if you know someone with big feet to step on their toes. No other comments, we have a roll call vote, please, Lena.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Arndt?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries four zero.
Okay, that brings us to Resolution FY twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, Accepting a Brown Bear Trust Grant. Scott?
Move to approve Resolution Number FY twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, authorizing acceptance of a Kodiak Brown Bear Trust Small Grant Award of one thousand dollars for safety messaging and education in brown bear country.
Second.
Second.
Motion, a second, staff report.
You notice I did the four-point-eight first. This is a one-thousand. This is a $1,000 grant. We will be using it for public education. The bears are out. We have definite proof at dumpsters. We've had reference to deer legs in the, in the bush. So, the bears are out. I would also take this opportunity to really request folks in the community to please close dumpsters. Don't let trash outside. All this is doing is costing all the ratepayers and all the citizens of Kodiak. But that is partially what some of this money is going to be used for, so hence my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments from the Assembly? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Arndt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries 4-0.
Okay, that takes us to other items, confirmation of the mayoral appointment to the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council, Ms. Rebecca Skinner. And, motion first, Scott?
Move to confirm the mayoral appointment of Rebecca Skinner to the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council Board of Directors for a two-year term to expire May 2024.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I brought her name forward, she's currently our representative. She took over for Al Birch when Al Birch was doing the job that she's doing now. She was on the Assembly when she got that job. We know that Mr. Arndt had said, maybe an Assembly member should be on the, the committee. But, in fact, it hasn't been that way for the, our existence, other than the fact that she was on the Assembly when she took over for Al Birch. I should note that the city representative is not on the council. And if you look at the list, there's, there's a lot of people on the council who don't even belong to municipalities. There's all kinds of organizations, and some of the municipalities have appointed people who are not on their council. And one of the reasons for that is longevity. I think that she's been doing a great job. I think she's more than capable. I think she's more than familiar with the fisheries, which is one of the biggest things that would be impacted by another oil spill. And I am asking that the Assembly approve this appointment for Ms. Skinner for another two years. Comments? Scott, Smiley?
I support Ms. Skinner's application for this role. She's been doing a really good job there. They brought to us their analysis of DEC or DER changes to the way oil spills are dealt with, and it was really well done. I have some experience in this, being on Cook Inlet Regional Citizens Advisory Council for a few years. And it's, requires considerable startup time before you understand really what's all going on. Ms. Skinner is really intelligent, she's a lawyer. We don't want to kill all the lawyers, but some of them, for sure. And she's also, has a background in fisheries, which is where the leather meets the road, the rubber meets the road with regards to oil spills. That'll screw up our economy in no time at all. And we need somebody in there that's going to really look over the potentials for oil spills. We've had them before in Prince William Sound, and you know how devastating that oil spill in '89 was. So, I'm supportive of her appointment.
Anybody else wishing to address the Assembly on this? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Mr. Arndt?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley? We have a tie?
Yeah, but it's...
It fails, motion failed.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Okay, then I will ask you, Lena, to start advertising for citizens to be on the Prince William Citizens, Regional Citizens Council, Advisory Council. And we will, we'll probably open it for two weeks, and then we'll, if we have any applications, and if not, we'll go from there. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item number two, confirmation of mayoral appointment to the Consolidation Committee at-large seat for Mr. Cortenf. Motion, Scott?
Move to confirm the mayoral appointment of Mr. Cortenf to an at-large seat on the Consolidation Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Nef has volunteered after, I think, three meetings ago, when we decided not to put a sitting member of the staff on there. And what we're trying to do is get a quorum so that we can have a meeting and hopefully come to a quick, a quick or swift solution to this committee, which has been going on for a long time. So, my purpose is to appoint him, so we do have a quorum, and then hopefully, we can move forward quickly. Comments? Scott?
Thank you. I'm gonna vote yes on Mr. Cortenf to the committee. As we said, discussed before the, the meeting here tonight, I am interested in, in having a discussion about the end of this committee. And so, I am not interested in putting anyone else on here, because it's been assured to me, this is just to get a quorum to, to pass the report on to us, and then, as you're saying, disband potentially. So, I look forward to getting that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Just wanted to say thank you for volunteering for that. It's not, we don't have a ton of volunteers, so we really appreciate it when the community gets involved, and so, thank you for that.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Arndt?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries 4-0.
So, I'll look at Jared now. You should be able to get a quorum, although you might have to wait for now for, for James come back. But, we've talked about it, I talked about it with you, I talked about it with James. We need to just wrap this up. If there's more work to be done than I think it's positive, you can come back to the Assembly. But, we were charged to look into it by the citizens. The committee was set up to say, should we go forward or should we not? I think we've gotten into the weeds on a little bit of it, so let's, let's pull our head up and say, yeah, we think you should go ahead and dump that on the Assembly, or no, this isn't gonna work without the cooperation of the city, or whatever. Whatever comes of it, let's, let's move this forward, because I agree with Scott, this has dragged on way too long. Thank you. And thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome.
I hope you don't hate us when you find out what you got yourself into.
Oh, I just, it needed to be done by somebody, so I'm glad, too. I'm, I'm interested in it, too.
I did want to add, because of Mr. Arndt's comment, we did receive another application for the Consolidation Committee yesterday from Jocelyn. She's on the Kodiak College, Jocelyn Keys. So, we do also have that application pending.
I'm gonna hold off making any more appointments to see if we can get a quorum and, and get a direction. So, that's what I told Scott, and I don't want to be telling him something, telling him something this way and going, yeah, just do whatever you want. No, and, because that's the way I feel also. So, with that, we have the last item, which is Borough Property Leasing Procedure. I'm not too aware what this is about. I know that an Assembly member has brought forth his company to lease a building, and I think that that's probably not proper, but I'm not gonna go into that now. We need to have some kind of discussion on leasing procedure, but this may be better at a work session. But since it's Amy that put it on there, I'm gonna let you take the ball.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did ask to get this put on because we were addressed during the work session last week with the possibility of renting or having a company in the community sign a lease for one of the properties that we owned. I thought that that was an interesting proposal, because the only talk we've really done for that particular property in question was to demolish it. So, the idea of the borough being able to save that and provide a service to the community and make some money on the side was intriguing. So, I wanted to add that to the agenda, so we could talk about that and see if that was something the Assembly was interested in doing, and if so, what the proper process would be. The, I know that it's easy to get excited about something and want to push it forward, but I also feel like we have a responsibility to the community to follow a process. So, I just wanted to address that process tonight.
I don't know that we have all the data we need to address that process unless Roxanne has already been doing it. Okay.
Can I offer my thoughts, please?
Go ahead.
So, just for anybody listening in, one of the additional duties of the Borough Manager is I'm also the lease manager, because there's no longer a resource manager as there once was. So, this falls on my shoulders. And it's my understanding that prior Borough Managers would have the occasion where they would set leases up with whomever they wanted, or whatever organization they wanted. I'm not as comfortable with that, because I'd like to know who would be interested in leasing properties before I would select or cherry-pick amongst any favorites or perceived favorites. So, I just would like to suggest a process, and I'm not trying to make it complicated whatsoever. I'd love to do a week of advertising, and then we could do that through the Kodiak Daily Mirror, announce this on our website, and in potentially any radio advertising, just to get the word out about it. And then, what I would do is bring applications, we develop an application, and those applications would be brought back to the Assembly, and then the Assembly could let us know who we should proceed with establishing a lease contract with. You know, I'm not trying to deter people at all from applying, and I just want to provide equal opportunity for anybody who may be concerned with who we're leasing to. And I just humbly would request a week to develop such a program, because I know there's interest right now. We just have to take some actions as staff to get this rolling. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, and that's just my suggestions.
Well, let me give you my, my feeling really quick. Yeah, probably there have been leases let, just because someone came up and said, yeah, you can have this lease. This particular building's got a lot of problems, there's risks involved. I think we need risk management. We have a risk manager, I believe that's our CFO. We also have a facilities director. I think there are some things that need to be looked at before we even talk about leasing this. And last of all, leasing this building for a purpose other than what it was is gonna require zoning compliance and gonna require building code compliances. And I'm not sure if you advertise this to the public around this area, that you're gonna get a positive feedback on putting that kind of occupancy on Borough Hill. I know members of the Assembly were against the fire hall, because they thought it was unsafe. I think that putting a, not even a multifamily, it's, it's really a bunkhouse with transient workers right next to the school might raise some people's ire. And I think we need more than a week to advertise this, because we need to look at it, we need to get the attorney involved, we need to, if we're gonna do it, we need to go out and make sure that the people will allow us to change the use of that building, and also talk to the building department, see what they're gonna require. They may not want a lease once they find out the requirements. I know we've got asbestos over there, I know it's probably a fire trap, I know there's a bunch of things over there that are a problem. So, I don't see this being tied up in a week. But, you can come forward with a method, and I would appreciate that. I think that's the best we can do, but I think we ought to consider all those other things also. Anybody else? Scott?
Thank you. When the proposal was made last, last week at our work session under Citizens' Comments, one of the things that intrigued me is, I was fully prepared to be looking at demoing these buildings, but I didn't know where the money was gonna come to do, come from. The things that, if you leave a building, it's gonna be vandalized, and so, you gotta remove it. We had also talked previously that we were looking, you know, when you're gonna demolish a building, you've gotta do a demo assessment of that, which includes all that things. If we're not demoing it, it's typically an asbestos and lead paint survey that needs to be done. It changes drastically on the requirements there. But, what I see this as is, as generating some money as a, as a bunkhouse, and I think that, I think, I think it can be accommodated, that's a proposal here. I think it can be accommodated, it's not gonna be a parking issue problem on there. Yes, there might be some problems with, with its proximity, but we, we've seen, we've seen, we've seen people complain about having schools in the proximity of their neighborhood because of the traffic that it brings in there, too, in the past. So, I think the, the first thing is to request proposals. And I don't think we need any elaborate application form. I think you, you leave it open for people to apply. And depending upon how much time they're wishing to put into it and how serious they are, it's gonna show up in the proposals. We may decide not to take any of them and be back to potentially demoing it. But, I, I, what, what I was thinking of is probably more along the lines of a two-week period, where Friday, April 1st, April Fool's Day, that potentially proposals would be due to then have staff go over and, you know, go through them and, and then bring recommendations to us. Realizing full well that there's, there's, there's other processes that gotta be gone through. And I, I can speak to, when I moved here in 1964, this was the largest trailer court that existed in Kodiak, was on Borough Hill. That's what was here. And then, and the school, and it was right next to what was Main Elementary School at that time, along with the junior high and the high school, was in that building. And I went, went there, attended there. So, to me, it's not unconceivable that it's a bunkhouse, and it allows us to put it into an enterprise fund and generate the money for the removal of it in the future. And we can also put in a clause in there that if we come up with a government, a borough government use for the property, that we can give one, one year's notice on, on ending the lease, something like that. So, we, we have options before us, and I agree that it's something we gotta look, look into a little bit. But by advertising it now and giving people two weeks on there, and, and we leave it an open application kind of thing, let them determine how much information they want to give us is gonna determine how they get scored on it, when it's brought forward to us. That's my feeling.
Scott, Smiley?
Yeah, I mean, our next work session is the 31st, that's two weeks away, so that part works. I don't think open application is a good idea. I think we have to set some parameters, the amount you're willing to pay per month or whatever, the duration that you're looking at for the lease. Those two things, I think, are really important. I think in the interim, we need to get the lawyer and our risk manager and our building inspector looking at this a lot closer. I think that the issue of NIMBY is always a problem for government, and I think we want to be careful about that. government, and I think we wanna be careful about that. But, on the other hand, this is us being responsible about our, the buildings that we're in charge with, being charged with, and trying to be responsible about the financial health of our borough. Thank you.
You know, I don't have a problem with a future lease on that building, other than I don't think the building itself is gonna lend itself well to somebody coming in and putting a large amount of money down to do the repairs and that, and then find out that they could be thrown out in a year. I think two weeks is way too short a time to give staff to prepare this and get it out on the street. I think it needs to be more time than that. I think there's no, I don't see any rush to get into this unless the one person that is trying to do it has a really hard deadline into that. I'd say, "I'm sorry," but I think there's too many questions that need to be answered before we go putting a lease out on that building. And, if you say you can do it in a week, you're being extremely nice because I know how busy you are and other stuff. I think that we need to be looking at a little bit longer time before we even get the applications out and make sure the advertisement has been out long enough so that anybody, any potential renters might come and look at it. And, then we have to decide, well, what are we gonna require them as far as the building? Well, first of all, they have, whatever occupancy they have, they gotta meet the building codes. They have to meet the zoning compliance. It's public use land. We, we probably have to get some kind of a variance. I don't even know we do variances anymore. And, we'd have to advertise it. It's not gonna happen in two weeks. So, let's take our time to do our due diligence and then advertise this. That's my personal point of view. We can put this up for a vote in the next regular meeting, and I can be overthrown, and that's fine. But, I think that running into it helter-skelter is a, it's gonna be a disaster.
Can I just clarify? I was saying one week to establish the procedure to advertise. Diligence would take additional time. And, I am very willing, you know, to prioritize the diligence regarding this property. And, so I hope that that could speed up the process. And, in the meantime, I could be working on all of the things to get the outreach program for a week of advertising. So, I understand the sensitivity and how we wanna examine this quickly. I'm not planning to have an elaborate application, but I appreciate the input that was provided about what things you'd like to see in the application.
Jared?
Yeah, thanks for kinda bringing us back to the question. The question, with this, this property aside, was about the procedure and the transparency of the procedure, and actually having a procedure for, for doing this. And, so I just wanna express my, just gratitude for making this process more transparent. I was shocked to hear that it was just kind of willy-nilly that, that the Borough Manager would, would lease some of these properties. So, maybe this is more appropriate for a work session to, to talk about this. But, yeah, let's get a process down that is more accountable. I agree. Thank you. Yeah.
And, it's one that we can test for the first time and refine. So, this will be a good opportunity to do that.
So, would the Assembly like to talk about this at our next work session, which is the 31st? It's two weeks from now. Can we have some kinda presentation? I know it's...
Yeah, and staff will work on it.
It doesn't have to be, you know, dot the i's, cross the t's at this point, unless you can do it in that round of time.
We'll see how far we can get. Yeah.
Right? Yeah, let's do that for the 31st. And...
Thank you for the input. I appreciate it.
Yes. Scott?
Yeah, I would, if we're gonna put something in a proposal, what I would propose is that we should, we list that it's a triple-net lease, and they're responsible for everything.
Including taxes.
Yes. That's what a triple-net lease means.
Well, a lot of people...
Insurance.
A lot of people think that because we own the building, they don't have to pay taxes, but no occupant has to pay the taxes.
When, when it's used for, for a commercial purpose, there's the leasehold interest that pays, pays property taxes there. So...
Good point.
So, those are the kinda things that you throw in there. And, then, you know, basically, we're, we're very straightforward with all costs for meeting. All building codes are bore by the applicant. You know, just, just something, I'm looking for it being simple. That's all. And, you know, because I didn't see this coming, and there might be something else out there. But, but I'm interested because of our problems with finance. It helps generate the money for the eventual removal. We do know that sometime in the future, we will have to remove it. So...
Sooner than later if we don't do something with it, as you said.
Right. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you make sure that on the agenda for the 31st work session, we talk about the leasing of that building over there? And, I think Roxanne could probably help you with any wording on that. Okay. So, with that, we move on to Citizens' Comments. Anybody wishing to call in or anybody in the room wishing to address the Assembly? If you're calling in, it's (907) 486-3231, toll-free, (1855) 492-9202. If you're here, sign in and state your name for the record, and make sure the microphone is on. If you're calling in, state your name for the record clearly, and please turn off your listening device so we don't have backfeed. Address your marks the Assembly as a body, and please keep it civil.
Hi, my name's Court Neff. I really like the idea of that being able to be a non-burden, burdensome property. I just, to me, it just seems like a nightmare to have to maintain that and be responsible for it until we can destroy it. And, the needs of finances that we have right now are many. And, I mean, it just seems like a golden opportunity potentially. So, I just wanna voice my support, and thanks a lot for your job tonight, folks. Bye.
Thank you, Court, excuse me. And, welcome to the Consolidation Committee. Anybody else? Any call-ins? Seeing none, we will move on to Assemblymember's comments. Well, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start with Scott.
Thank you. Welcome back, Bill.
Thank you.
And, I was gonna address, the manager had made a comment about the fire on, on Seabreeze, of which I'm also aware that there are a bunch of neighbors that are very happy to see the building burned, and felt that there was very little inconvenience to them after enduring it for so many years on it. It was an eyesore. It was a junkyard. It was a mess. So, and I invite you to go drive by it now. It's not completely cleaned up, but it's amazing the difference in just the Monday and Tuesday on there. Would've been done all on Monday, but they got shut down temporarily. So, thank you, Roxanne, for, for that. I'm also very happy to hear that the contract with Nova is signed and just needs our approval, and we'll have a special meeting on Monday. My question to you, Jared, is I heard you say under the appointment, "Without James, you're not gonna have a quorum for Monday."
We will.
You will?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Otherwise, we can do it at 6:30. Is where, is where I was going with that. Also, I, you know, you had mentioned standing down the operations of the emergency. Do we need to pass something to get us out of it? Because...
I'm gonna have to check with the clerk. We did declare an emergency. We might have to...
That's what I'm looking at. And, I'd, I'd like to see that on the meeting for, for our next regular meeting, if not a, a special meeting, potentially on the 24th or on the 31st of March. Because, I agree that we need to be out of there and, and get this stood down. And, then we can address the problems with that ordinance to begin with. Because, I voted no on us, on that emergency declaration, and James Derner did because there was no end date. And, here we are, two years later, which was, James and I feared where we would be without having any input from the Assembly. And, I wanna make sure that never happens again. So, so I look very much forward to that. I was also happy to hear, Roxanne, that you, when you mentioned that Dave and Matt will be going to that grand symposium. I think that's very appropriate. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Scott. Jared?
I, I want to express my gratitude to Roxanne, and especially to SEMA. SEMA's still here for all of, and their staff for all of the housekeeping they've been in, some of these policies and the text. I find stuff like that fun, but, but it's, it's hard work, and it's such attention to detail. So, I just wanna recognize your, your work on that. And, I really do, I really appreciate it. Reconciling text and, and policy is, is really important. And, then, express my gratitude to Mr. Neff. Welcome to the committee, and I think we'll get a quorum and get some things done. Thank you. And, slancha, everyone. Irish for good health.
Scott Smiley?
I'm sick of winter. I got up this morning, and it was below 30. And, I'm just sick and tired of it. I'd like to see daffodils, and that's enough.
Amy?
Thank you. It was 16 in the flats this morning, so enough complaining over there. So, a couple of things real quick. I think the mayor did a really good job covering what we talked about with Representative Stutes and Senator Stevens this morning and this afternoon again. But, one thing I wanted to point out is that Senator Murkowski has done some voodoo magic and got us $200 million dedicated to the ferry system. And, even though it's federal money and it's a national bill, the words are in there that can only be used on systems that go over 50 miles. So, it's us. That is our money, which is absolutely incredible. And, then in addition to that, we have a 59 million step up from the state to make sure that we have the money to continue operating. But, so that was just such a win, when it just looked so dire before for the ferry system. So, that's really exciting. The less good news about the ferry system is that we don't have any service here on Kodiak until April 29th. It'll be the Kennebec. We'll start seeing some regular service, and then we get, thank you, I was echoing, then we get the Testamina back, but not until July. So, we're gonna see some different service this summer, but it's coming. We have a lot of people in the community that are working on the Testamina replacement vessel project, so I get constant updates about that. So, that's gonna be exciting to see that happen. The other great thing that we've got news about today was the energy dividend that the state legislature is working on. The Alaskans will get some kind of kickback. It will not be tied to the PFD. It'll be a separate energy dividend. So, we look forward, of course, to hearing more about that. And, then, the only other thing is I'd like to echo Assemblymember Arnt's comments about the emergency declaration. And, I think that we are going to introduce a change to the way that we do business and where the Assembly will ratify that we're still in emergency every 30 or 60 days or whatever the Assembly deems appropriate. Once we go in, just so the Assembly, because we do not have our manager in charge of the ESC, we have very little control of what goes on. So, this will just give, and it gives the City Council, the City Council can do that too, and just give that, the elected officials a little more say in what's happening with our emergency. I hope we never have to use it. But, in the event that something comes up again, it will give us a little more control. And, I think it'll answer some of those questions that a lot of community members had, like, six months ago, when we were like, "When? Where's the end?" So, hopefully that'll give us some more control over that process. And, that's all for tonight. Thanks.
That's a mouthful. Thank you. Okay, so, a couple of quick announcements. A special meeting Monday at 6:00 PM right here. Our subject is gonna be the interim clerk's contract. Then, we have a joint meeting with the school district over in their chambers. I believe that is at 6:30 also. Yes, 6:30, March 24th. That's next Thursday. And, we're gonna be talking about the budget and monies and stuff like that. And, then we have a work session scheduled here for the 31st. And, then a next regular meeting will be on the 7th, and again, it'll be here. So, I, there's a note on here that says, "Don't forget, everybody, the assessments are out. They went out on March 1st. You have 30 days to appeal your assessment if you do not think it's correct." And, I know a lot of people don't like their assessments, but would look at them, see if you believe your property's worth that. And, if not, make an appointment and come in and talk to staff. They're very good about explaining what's going on. With that, unless there's any kind of, anybody that objects, we are going to adjourn. We are adjourned.
Thank you.